Okay. Susan Schnall, New York City Veterans for Peace, Thomas Dwyer, John Maraglano, and Tarek Kauf.
My name is Susan Schnall. I am currently president of New York City Veterans for Peace. I'm also an adjunct professor at New York University and a member of the New York City Pension Fund, for I worked for the New York City Public Hospitals for over 31 years. Fifty years ago, I served this country as a nurse in the United States Navy, caring for the wounded who came home from war in Southeast Asia. I also protested United States involvement in that war and was court martialed for my peace activities. Like many of us in Veterans for Peace, I've witnessed the pain, the horror of war, the destruction, the use of bombs, the use of chemical defoliants, the harm caused by our military and our government. Today, I am testifying in support of Resolution 976 and Intro 1621. Veterans for Peace is a member of the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons. These represent organizations in 100 countries promoting adherence to and implementation of the United Nations Nuclear Weapon Ban Treaty. As a member of this coalition, Veterans for Peace is dedicated to pressuring the United States government to sign the treaty. For over three weeks in October 2019, I was on a peace trip to Japan, speaking to civil society organizations, academics, United States Navy, Japan Self-Defense Forces, and schoolchildren to apologize for my government having dropped nuclear weapons on Hiroshima and Nagasaki. Today, I come before the New York City Council and thank you for sponsoring these resolutions and introduction. I come in support to make New York City a nuclear-free city, as well as in support of Intro 1621, divestment of New York City pension funds currently invested in companies involved in nuclear weapons and nuclear weapons production and maintenance, for as I said, I'm also a member of the Pension Fund in New York City. The corporations manufacturing nuclear weapons are fueling the nuclear arms race for their own financial gain. They actively lobby their governments and their parliaments to continue allocating funds for nuclear weapons, and they support their think tanks and other public initiatives to promote the "need for nuclear weapons maintenance, modernization, or expansion."
Can you just rock up?
I am.
Okay.
We must become a life-affirming society instead of a death-enhancing culture. It is our responsibility, all of us, as citizens of the world who reside in New York City, to make our voices heard, to make our city and continue it as a nuclear-free zone. We thank you, our elected representatives, for hearing us, to attempt to divest from those nuclear companies that make their profits on death and destruction. We thank you for listening to the people of New York City, to listening to us veterans who have served this country and request that we divest from nuclear production industries. Thank you all for hearing us.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi there. My name is John Maraglano. They call me Johnny Brooklyn or Johnny Skates. I am a lifelong Teamster member, and I work for Local 814. I'm a foreman with Globe Storage and Moving, and I overheard that this meeting was happening at a party and was compelled to come because something has been bothering me for 30 years. I worked in the Baker &amp; Williams warehouse for Globe. We leased that space for probably about 15 years in the late 80s and early 90s until they forced us out of our lease. How many times I was on the floor, on the floors of the building, at some floors you could actually see the train tracks where the High Line now exists, and there were barrels everywhere, and we always wondered what was in those barrels, and the floor was made up of asphalt like it was on the street, and wherever the barrels sit, there was a big ring, there was warmth radiating from these barrels, and it was actually melted around, the asphalt was actually melted around the barrels. My boss was given a bonus to get us out of that building. If we could get out six months early, something was wrong, and we knew something was wrong, for them to force us out that quickly. I have always wondered about the cancers that some of our members got, about what happened, what the future is, what those people walking on the High Line now, what the people that are in the galleries that are there now, how that neighborhood has changed so much, but still, there are people that live there, there are human beings in this city that are exposed to things that they shouldn't be exposed to, and we cannot let, I hope that you will pass this so that we can't, that nobody is put in danger again like that. I didn't work there enough to be exposed in that way, or at least I don't think so, I don't know yet, but I'll never know what happened to some of those men, and if that was a cost, if that was part of it. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you for that. Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hi. My name is Tom Dwyer. I'm a retired insurance executive. I've worked in the Wall Street Financial, or the Financial District of Manhattan all my working years, and I just love New York, and I'm delighted to be at this hearing. I owe my presence here really to Anthony Donovan, who's here tonight, and is connected with the Catholic Workers Movement. If it hadn't been for him, I wouldn't be here. He was aware of the fact that during my time in the Army during the 1950s, I was posted to the Atomic Energy Commission's testing site in Mercury, Nevada, and where I witnessed the explosion of atomic bombs, and so he felt that it would be of interest to the people coming to this hearing to hear from somebody who actually has seen an atomic bomb explode. So, before I start, I'm just wondering, is there anyone else in this room who has seen one of these things actually blow up? Are there any? Because I'd be very interested as to whether I have any of my cohorts here. Okay. Well, it's an astounding, awesome, scary sight to see. I saw 11 of them in the spring of 1953. The background to it is that after I graduated from college in 1952, I was drafted into the Army, and the Korean War was on at the time, and sent to the Signal Corps Photography School in Fort Monmouth, New Jersey, where I was given extensive course in photography, particularly in processing films, and then was sent to the AEC's test site, and my assignment was to develop what were known as film badges. Film badges were essentially dental X-ray film that many of you may have seen or used when they were used. I don't think dentists use them anymore, but you used to put them in your mouth, and the X-ray machine was put up here, and after the X-rays went through, the doctor, the dentist could, and when it was developed, the film was developed inside this, he could tell what was wrong with your tooth. Well, those same gadgets were also used to tell how much radiation those working at the test site received, and I processed them, and to just wind this thing up, as a result of being there, I saw these 11 atomic bombs explode, and it's horrifying to see. The blast is enormous, the light would blind you if you weren't watching it through goggles, so I wholly endorse the bills that are before the City Council here of New York to do everything we can to eliminate these horrible weapons. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Thank you. My name's Tarek Kauf. I'm a member of Veterans for Peace New York. Veterans for Peace is an international organization with many sister and brother chapters across the globe. I'm also a member of Veterans for Peace Ireland. I was born in New York, I spend most of my time here, but the last year, I spent mostly in Ireland, including some time in Limerick Prison. The reason I was in Ireland was similar to why I'm here today. Ireland is supposed to be a neutral country. Eighty-two percent of the people in Ireland believe in neutrality and want to see neutrality. The US has been violating that neutrality at Shannon Airport since 2001, and actually before that. So, I was invited with some of my fellow veterans to come to Ireland, to stand with the Irish people, and to expose this hypocrisy that is going on by the Irish government allowing the US to do that. Now, there is a connection, and we have two things hanging over our head. We have the threat of nuclear war, as had been stated, and also the environmental destruction, climate change that's going on. Both of these things are intimately connected, and one of the things I spoke about in Ireland when I wasn't in Limerick Prison, and actually, I spoke about it in Limerick Prison too, because they were interested, was the connection between these two factors, these two horrible factors hanging over our head, threatening, you know, destruction to all life on earth. I'm talking about all life on earth. One of these bombs goes off, and that's it. Okay? So, I so applaud what you're doing, and like I said, 82% of the Irish people are in favor of neutrality, and I will bet you that 82%, at least, of New Yorkers would be in favor of the initiatives that you have courageously put forward. It is so important, and I thank you so much for doing this. And as far as the Gordian knot type of obstruction put forward before by the International Affairs Committee, you know, we gotta go past that. This has to be done. This is urgent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You must have known I was chair of the Irish Caucus here in the City Council.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much to this panel. We appreciate you coming in. Okay. Emily McGlaire. Irina Konch. I hope I said it right. I apologize if I didn't. I think it's Sajila Konwal. And Chin Hui Wong. Okay. So, we're calling for a time. Ever is good, though. Fine. Would you like to start here? Yeah.
Dear Council and Committee Members, my name is Emily McGlon, Director of Peaceboat U.S., an organization working in collaboration with the United Nations and civil society towards peace and sustainability, with a strong commitment to disarmament education. I am honored to speak to you today and share my support for these proposals to divest from and avoid any financial exposure to companies involved in the production and maintenance of nuclear weapons, reaffirming New York City as a nuclear weapon-free zone and supporting the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. As an international NGO, we fully support Resolution 0976 and Introduction 1621, which is not only a citywide declaration, but can also serve as an example for a nuclear-free world. With our office located in Manhattan, we are in favor of this nuclear disarmament legislation to let our home, New York City, shine as a role model for other major cities around the globe. Peaceboat is also a member of the International Steering Group of ICAN, the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons, which was awarded the 2017 Nobel Peace Prize, as we saw today. We work together with the Hibaksha, atomic bomb survivors from Hiroshima and Nagasaki, onboard our global voyages to raise awareness of the humanitarian consequences of nuclear weapons. As we know, the atomic bombings in Japan killed more than 200,000 people in 1945. Even today, the survivors continue to suffer diseases and health issues associated with exposure to ionizing radiation nearly 75 years later. Given that New York City started the nuclear age as a keynote in the Manhattan Project, which developed the atomic bombs, we have a responsibility to work towards the total elimination of these weapons and to maintain our status as a nuclear weapon-free zone. Together with our partners here today, we support our Council members and request that you align our city's financial power with our progressive values. Thank you very much for your consideration and the opportunity to support these historic resolutions today.
Dear Committee, my name is Irina Konch, and I'm reading this testimony on behalf of Linda Chapman, the Associate Artistic Director of New York Theatre Workshop and the founding President of Youth Arts New York. I grew up in Spokane, Washington, upwind from the Hanford Nuclear Plant on the Columbia River. I'm a two-time cancer survivor, and I've always suspected that Hanford's side emission leaks, long suppressed from public discussion, may have had something to do with my disease. I'm writing on behalf of passing the legislation Resolution 976 on Nuclear Disarmament and Intro 621, a bill to create a nuclear disarmament and nuclear weapon-free zone advisory committee. New York City played a major role in developing their nuclear bomb, so as progenitor and now, possible immediate target for nuclear attack, with a special responsibility in putting a stop to the use of nuclear weapons. I came to New York City to pursue a career in the theater. New York City is the bastion of culture and US society. It is for this love and stewardship of human life itself that I want to rid the world of nuclear weapons. We must protect ourselves, nature, our theater, our music, and our art, since one nuclear bomb over New York would destroy everything and everyone we love. I would like to thank City Council members for being real leaders and taking responsibility where the federal government fails, by confronting the lie and reality of nuclear weapons, one local initiative at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, please.
Hello. I'm Sajila Kenwa, and I'm reading the testimony on the behalf of Yasuke Yamashita, a survivor of Nagasaki atomic bomb. Over the course of 12 years, I have participated in an initiative called Hibaksha Stories, a program of Youth Arts New York. I have personally interacted with tens of thousands of New York City high school students, sharing my story so that they will take leadership in ridding the world of nuclear weapons. I, Yasuke Yamashita, was a six-year-old boy in Nagasaki when the atomic bomb fell. Normally, on a hot summer day, I would go out to the mountains with my friends of my age to catch dragonflies and cicadas. However, on this day, I was playing at home nearby, my mother was preparing the midday meal. Suddenly, at precisely 11:02, we were blinded with an intense light like thousands of simultaneous flashes of lightning. My mother pushed me to the ground and covered me with her body. We heard that roar of great wind, and flying debris of the house collapsed on top of us. Then there was silence. The atomic bomb had turned the center of Nagasaki into an inferno of death and devastation. Communications and transportation were disrupted. There was no food in the city, and we were starving. One week after the explosion, we walked through the rubble of the city center where fires still burned on our way to the countryside, where relatives would share what little food they had. Later, I learned about the dangers of radiation that caused my father's death, and I witnessed the effects when I worked in the Nagasaki Atomic Bomb Hospital. It was very painful to see the survivors still suffering from the effects of burns and radiations. In 1968, I moved to Mexico. I have accepted many invitations to speak about my atomic bomb experience. I feel that it's important to keep alive the memory of the suffering, devastation, and death that nuclear weapons can cause, in the hope that no one will ever use them again. I worry, because each year, there are fewer and fewer people still alive who can speak about this memory from personal experience. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much also. Next, please.
Hello. My name is Chin Hui Wong. I'm reading the testimony on behalf of Shigeko Sasamori, an atomic bomb survivor from Hiroshima. Over the course of 12 years, I have participated in Hibaksha Stories and interacted with thousands of New York City high school students, sharing my story so that they would take leadership in ridding the world of nuclear weapons. I was a 13-year-old student in Hiroshima, Japan, when the United States dropped the atomic bombs on my city. Hearing the sound of a plane, I looked up to see a B-29 flying overhead. Seconds later, I was knocked unconscious by the blast. When I came to, I was so badly burned that I was unrecognizable. I repeated my name and address over and over until I was finally found days later by my father. My friend, who was at my side when we looked into the sky, and many classmates who were there, died. Some, of course, survived, like me. One-third of my body was burned, all my face, neck, back, half of my chest, shoulders, arms, and both hands. It's a miracle to me. Years later, I traveled to the United States in 1955 as part of a group of young women known as the Hiroshima Maidens. While in New York, I underwent numerous plastic surgery operations and met my adoptive father, Dr. Norman Cousins. I have dedicated my life to making certain no one ever experiences what I experienced, and have traveled around the world, telling my story and sharing my love. I have met thousands of New York City students who hugged me and gave me their love after my testimony. I love these children, and it breaks my heart that anything bad would ever happen to them. New York has always been a home to me, and I'm proud that the New York City Council is providing world leadership in ridding the world of nuclear weapons. No more war, no more Hiroshimas, no more Nagasakis. Thank you.
So, can I just ask, how did you get the testimony of those two victims of the atomic bombing?
Sure. From Peaceboat U.S., we are in partnership with Hibaksha Stories and Youth Arts New York, and we work directly with, actually, I know these survivors personally, who have traveled with us and spoken with us at many schools here in New York City. They sent us the testimonies personally.
You met them?
These are our interns, and they're reading on behalf of the survivors.
And you met them?
I know them personally, yes.
That's really amazing. It's really important to hear that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one last testimony.
Yeah, I know. Is that Lina Gurung?
Yes.
Okay, Lina.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Lina Gurung, and I'm reading this testimony on behalf of Ms. Setsuko Thurlo, who is a survivor of the atomic bomb in Hiroshima and recipient of the Nobel Peace Prize in 2017 with the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons. Dear Council and Committee Members, as a 13-year-old schoolgirl, I witnessed my beloved city of Hiroshima burn in the heat of 4,000 degrees Celsius, turning into a place of desolation with heaps of rubble, skeletons, and blackened corpses everywhere. Of a population of 360,000 largely noncombatant women, children, and elderly, most became victims of the indiscriminate massacre of the atomic bombing. Even today, nearly 75 years later, people are still dying from the delayed effects of one atomic bomb, considered crude by the contemporary standards for mass destruction. Through months and years of struggle for survival, rebuilding lives out of the ashes, we survivors, or Hibakusha, became convinced that no human being should ever have to repeat our experience, and that our mission is to warn the world about the reality of the nuclear threat and to help people understand the ultimate evil of nuclear weapons. When I co-accepted the Nobel Peace Prize on behalf of the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons, I recalled the words I heard when I was rescued from the rubble of a collapsed building in the ruins of Hiroshima. "Don't give up. Keep pushing. See the light. Crawl towards it." This legislation, Resolution 976 and Intro 1621, is part of that light, the light for abolition. On behalf of the survivors of Hiroshima and Nagasaki, I would like to express my deep gratitude to all in the New York City Council who support this effort. I urge you to vote in favor of nuclear disarmament bills to invest in New York City's future and send a message to Washington, DC, and the world to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the whole panel. Thank you. All right. We're gonna go to six. So, Sergeant, we're gonna need two extra seats, if you can get that for us. Michi Takah.
Good afternoon, New York City Council members and fellow New Yorkers. My name is Michi Takeuchi. New York City has been my home for the past 40 years. This creative and energetic city has given me so much. I feel I owe it to this city. I owe it to share my story about my family, who survived the atomic bombing in Hiroshima. My grandfather, Dr. Ken Takeuchi, was the founding president of the Red Cross Hospital in Hiroshima. On August 6, 1945, the first wartime use of an atomic bomb leveled my hometown, which had a mostly civilian population of 300,000. Although close to ground zero, the Red Cross Hospital withstood total destruction. The enormous blast caused a heavy door to fly off its hinges and knocked my grandfather unconscious. When he came to, he was unable to move due to broken bones all over his body. But foul worse was what he saw. Unimaginable suffering, dead bodies everywhere. It was complete chaos. The A-bomb indiscriminately destroyed everyone and everything in Hiroshima. Severely burned and injured people began streaming into the hospital, desperately looking for help. The surviving doctors and nurses did the best they could with no electricity and few medical supplies. That day, it is estimated that more than 72,000 people died. By the end of 1945, the deaths totaled over 140,000. The nuclear weapons we have today are 3,000 times more powerful than the ones dropped on Hiroshima and Nagasaki. If one of these modern weapons was used on New York City with 8.5 million people, it could cause a disaster of unprecedented scale and thrust the globe into an immediate climate crisis, killing millions more people worldwide. We cannot allow the same catastrophic fate of Hiroshima and Nagasaki to befall this city that we love so much. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Next, please.
My name is Rosemarie Pace. I'm Director of PAX Christi Metro New York, a region of the International Catholic Peace Movement. I thank you very much for this opportunity to speak in support of Intro 1621 and Resolution 976. Since I represent the Catholic Peace Movement, my testimony is rooted in Catholic social teaching. Pretty much since the development of nuclear weapons, the Catholic Church has opposed them, recognizing them to be weapons of mass destruction, capable of destroying all life, all of God's creation. Just this past November, Pope Francis visited Hiroshima and Nagasaki, Japan, where in August 1945, the United States of America dropped the only nuclear weapons ever used in war. Much of my testimony will be the words of Pope Francis that he delivered on his historic trip. In Hiroshima, he said in part, "With deep conviction, I wish once more to declare that the use of atomic energy for purposes of war is today more than ever a crime, not only against dignity of human beings, but against any possible future for our common home. The use of atomic energy for purposes of war is immoral, just as the possessing of nuclear weapons is immoral. We will be judged on this. How can we speak of peace even as we build terrifying new weapons of war? How can we speak about peace even as we justify illegitimate actions by speeches filled with discrimination and hate? Indeed, if we really want to build a more just and secure society, we must let the weapons fall from our hands. A true peace can only be an unarmed peace." In Nagasaki, Pope Francis was even more specific. "We must never grow weary of working to support the principal international legal instruments of nuclear disarmament and nonproliferation, including the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons." He went on to address political leaders directly. "Convinced as I am that a world without nuclear weapons is possible and necessary, I ask political leaders not to forget that these weapons cannot protect us from current threats to national and international security. We need to ponder the catastrophic impact of their deployment, especially from a humanitarian and environmental standpoint, and reject heightening a climate of fear, mistrust, and hostility fomented by nuclear weapons." PAX Christi has made nuclear weapons abolition a cornerstone of its work since its beginning 75 years ago. In that context, I call on the New York City Council to pass Intro 1621 and Resolution 976. There is no time to lose.
Thank you. Next, please.
Dear Members of the New York City Council, my name is Sally Jones. I'm the Chair of Peace Action Fund of New York State, and I submit this testimony on behalf of Peace Action, an organization that began 57 years ago here in New York City as the Committee for a Sane Nuclear Policy. We have an office just a few blocks... We have an office just a few blocks from here, Peace Action New York State, and my local chapter, Peace Action of Staten Island, is a short ferry ride across the harbor. Through my involvement with Peace Action over the last eighteen years, I've learned about how present the danger is of nuclear war and nuclear accident and how much damage just the building of nuclear weapons is doing around the globe. This damage extends to my hometown of Staten Island, where tons of uranium were stored under the Bayonne Bridge during World War II in a site which has still not been properly remediated. We are thankful to the organizers who worked so hard to bring this legislation to you, the City Council members, and made these hearings possible. I have a special thank you, she's not here, to my own representative Councilmember Debbie Rose of Staten Island, who is a cosponsor. In three months, on April 24th and 25th, eight hundred Japanese, at least eight hundred Japanese, including survivors of August 6th and 9th of the atom bomb attacks, will be here in New York City along with hundreds of international activists and people all around, and they'll be here at Riverside Church. I want to welcome you, Councilmembers, to come to these events, and I think it would be a wonderful symbolic gesture for us to welcome the Japanese and the survivors with this legislation passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you get me the details? Thank you.
Yeah. So, thank you very much. My name is Anthony Donovan. I love sitting here and I've been, I'm looking at a great painting of George Washington and how he was fought against empire and how these nuclear weapons represent exactly that, putting this gun to people's heads. So, God bless you. We're gonna do our best to keep.
I gotta tell you something about that painting.
Yes.
Notice where the horse is behind us.
[laughing]
It'll tell you what the painter thought of George Washington.
Okay, all right. Great, thank you. And well, and thank you so much, Councilmember Trump and Chairman Cabrera for this precious moment and for everyone sticking it out today. It's very rare in our life that we get to do something that can save the world. It's, I'd say it's pretty rare, right? You're doing it. You're doing it by this legislation. I want to share an experience that I had four years ago when I visited. I spent a week going into the offices of our representatives of our United States. Every member of the Armed Service Committee, every member of our Appropriations Committee, these are the people responsible for our nuclear weapons. And I found out some really disturbing things, and this is after I did this documentary, which is unfortunate, but I found out they did not have an idea of what one bomb actually does. They hadn't thought about it. So, I'm really proud to be with people who think about this. It's, I'm a hospice nurse. I know what it takes to care for your mother, your child who's got cancer. I know how much energy it takes for one person. You can't even consider what this is. So, they didn't know what one bomb does. The other thing is they had, these are the people responsible? They had no idea what the cost was. They didn't know. They couldn't give me a figure. Oh, it's about, so wow, okay. So, and Councilmember Trump, you know that you have to be accountable and you need some transparency. You're a finance chair. This is, imagine our government not knowing the cost. And just, just quickly, what else I found out with them is they had no idea that one hundred and fifty-five countries at that time were gathering to talk about this because they knew the nuclear states were just going along with the status quo. And later I found out the myth that they also kicked back with, well, our allies depend on us. Our allies really need us with these nuclear weapons. They don't. And I've been to Scotland, where fifty-seven out of fifty-nine Scottish Members of Parliament say we want these weapons out. And I've been to Germany, where seventy to ninety-three percent of the citizens want our twenty nuclear bombs out of Germany. So, the people are really behind you. Thank you so much. God bless you for doing this. You're a great light.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. My name is Michael Gorbachev. I am a production designer right here in Soho, and you probably guessed, I am related to this former Soviet Union leader Mikhail Gorbachev. And so, my father is Yuri Gorbachev. He's a world-famous Russian artist, cousin of Mikhail Gorbachev. He was good friends with Mikhail, Mikhail's wife, Reisa Gorbachev. In 1988, Reisa invited my father to showcase his artwork in the Soviet Cultural Foundation, as she frequently exhibited passionate artists who were against war and nuclear weapons. Reisa also was the one who encouraged my father to take his family and migrate to New York City because she knew Russia would be going through difficult times. We migrated from Ukraine in 1991. In 1996, the United Nations commissioned my father to create original work and to redesign the United Nations stamp. His Green Parrot on Red Flower painting is currently housed in their collection. Mikhail Gorbachev has been very proactive in downsizing the volume and availability of nuclear weapons on the international level. He holds a strong position against further development, maintenance, and expansion of all nuclear arsenals. He is convinced that it is just a matter of time before nuclear weapons fall into their own hands and create a scenario of attack and instant retaliation. Sharing the same beliefs on this important matter, I too believe the world will greatly benefit from seizing production and elimination of all nuclear weapons. The two prominent leading nuclear countries are still Russia and the United States. Diplomatic tensions continue to escalate between the two nations. While some of the reasons are due to irrational phobias and televised propaganda, they have recently become more similar socially, economically, and politically. I strongly believe trustworthy diplomatic relations are important and necessary to deescalate the production existence of nuclear war capabilities. There is much more to collectively benefit from having stronger relations versus being in opposition. Together, the two nations can stand together and encourage the rest of the world to nuclearize. I strongly support the TPNW and the nuclear weapons divestment. New York is one of the greatest and most influential cities on earth, and it should stand firmly against any cooperation or ties to nuclear weapons manufacturing. Every one of us can play a small part in this brave contribution and set a positive example for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very interesting. Thank you. Reverend?
Yes. Thank you. Good afternoon, and I'm sorry, you must be so tired, no time to go to the bathroom even, maybe, but sorry.
I'm energized by this. I'm ready to go. Let's fight, you know?
Yeah. So, my name is TK Nakagaki, Toshikazu Kenjitsu Nakagaki. I'm the President and Founder of Hewa Peace and Reconciliation Foundation of New York and also the former President of the Buddhist Council of New York, current also is Vice President of the Buddhist Council of New York as well. And also, I was kind of recognized as a Hiroshima Peace Ambassador as well as a Nagasaki Peace Correspondent. And so, I've been organizing actually the Hiroshima-Nagasaki Memorial in Manhattan since I came to the New York 1994. So, actually, twenty-six years I've been, every year, annually, hosting the Interface Peace Gathering to commemorate Hiroshima-Nagasaki. And so, that's the kind of my background. And also, in this case, I'd like to also share why I'm doing, I'm not that familiar with everything, but you know, everybody's talking about it already, so I don't have to say those things. Instead, my intention is simple, very, you know, life is very important for everyone. Why do we need to have weapons even, like, kill anybody? And especially this, nuclear weapons is too, you know, too much, really. And so, that's one of the reasons. And two countries should be responsible for this particular thing ever happen. One is Japan because it was a country somehow, somehow, actually, of course, there's a reason there too, but the atomic bomb was dropped. So, that's one country that should be. So, that's, this is my response for having this memorial service every time. So, we try, I try to bring the awareness of the people, the importance of the peace and the importance of all lives. And then, but the second part, then the other country is the United States, who use the weapons and especially New York. You know, the Manhattan Project, many people are talking about, Manhattan Project for these weapons. But yet, now we are actually, you know, I'm hoping always to see that Manhattan or New York or the United States become the responsibility, a responsible country which really maintain the peace and respecting the life. So, instead of Manhattan Project for war or, you know, nuclear weapons, I hope that this Manhattan Project, this is Manhattan Project for peace. And I hope you will move forward with this and make the U.S. as a more responsible country towards the deeds that you did or we did too. I probably, one of the comments I just wanted to share, there's a, one thing that I stuck in my mind was, you know, if U.S. didn't drop the bomb, maybe at that time, if Japan has a quality too, maybe they drop too. So, everybody was, you know, the kind of competing each other to try, try to win the game. But then the, that is a result here, so we need to really think of the peace as the most important things that we need to do and that we respect each other, we try to live together, and that's the message that I'd like to share with you today. And I fully support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming last week to give us a little piece before our stated meeting. Thank you. Thank you to this panel. Okay.
Counselor, just a reminder that we have to leave this room at 4:30, so I don't know if the next room will be our last panel, but you might want to stay that way until we switch to the next room at 4:30.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm being told that we only have this room till 4:30, so that's why I'm rushing a little bit with the panels, but if we still have people who want to speak at 4:30, we'll go next door to hear the rest of the panelists. We'll hear, everybody who signed up will get an opportunity to speak. All right. Yuni Chang? And by the way, after this hearing, there is a Lunar New Year celebration in this room. So, if you want to stick around for the Lunar New Year celebration, you're all welcome. Would you like to start?
Dear Councilmembers and esteemed colleagues, my name is Christian Chabano. I'm a representative of the NUKO-H Peace Foundation. I'm also registered in District Four, which covers the United Nations. I hold degrees in nonproliferation and terrorism studies as well as political science. I have been a nuclear disarmament activist since 2009. I have also been on government delegations to several high-level nuclear disarmament negotiations. As an American and native New Yorker, I grew up with limited knowledge about our city's involvement in the creation of nuko-weapons, which devastated the cities of Hiroshima and Nagasaki and ravaged the Pacific region. The devastating impact of nuko-testing in the Pacific region propelled me to act by helping the government of the Marshall Islands during the negotiations on the Treaty on the Prohibition of NUKO-weapons, TPNW, as an advisor. We negotiated the articles related to victim assistance and environmental remediation, also known as the positive obligations of the TPNW. To educate New Yorkers about the devastating impact of nuko-weapons, I've organized seminars at universities throughout our city. I brought high-level experts and diplomats to inform the students about the horrific impact of nuko-weapons. These young New Yorkers were able to pose questions and engage in meaningful dialogue about nuko-weapons and the TPNW with experts. Significantly, in December of 2018, I served as the official co-chair of the Global Youth Forum on the TPNW, which was held in Auckland, New Zealand. Several young New Yorkers attended the conference and engaged in dialogue with youth from both New Zealand and the Pacific region. These dialogues focused on the impact of U.S. nuko-testing in the region and the dome in the Marshall Islands where the U.S. has stored its nuclear waste from the tests. The American participants were shocked about the U.S. decision to test on the Pacific Islands and the environmental and humanitarian consequences of nuko-weapons. As a result of this conference, many of them, especially the New York participants, vowed to remain in the field of nuclear disarmament and interact with policymakers about the importance of the treaty. One of them even inspired his friend to become an activist in the field. This young person was able to convey her own views about nuko-weapons to diplomats by drafting the youth statement for an international U.N. conference in October of 2019. Her views resonated with many policymakers who began to understand the importance of youth engagement. We need to continue to have these cross-cultural dialogues and engage with all young New Yorkers about the impact of nuko-weapons. In this process of educating, to continue this process of educating New Yorkers, it is imperative for all Councilmembers to support these measures, initiative, Introduction 1621 and Resolution 976. These measures will help establish an advisory committee, reaffirm New York City's status as a nuko-weapons-free zone, underscore its support for both ICAN cities' appeal as well as the TPNW, and divest the pension fund. Together, we can establish a new peaceful period in New York and send a clear message to the entire world that New York City is committed to a world free of nuko-weapons. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, too. Thank you. Next, please.
John Lipsky, FBI retired, Longmont, Colorado. Honorable New York City Council members, staff, and visitors, I thank you for the opportunity to address Instant Introduction and Resolution. Your legislation promotes world peace, and I urge you to pass it. Nuclear weapons inherently produce nuclear waste that is not protective of human health and the environment. The United States is comprised of nuclear state-created dangers and cover-ups of weapons-grade plutonium-239 manufacturing, waste, and unfulfilled remediation. Plutonium-239, among many other nuclear weapon chemicals, is primarily anthropogenic, with a half-life of over twenty-four thousand years and capable of aberrations of human cells. One such nuclear superfund site is the former Rocky Flats Nuclear Weapons Plant, Denver or Golden, Colorado. I was a principal FBI agent who investigated crimes at Rocky Flats, where plutonium pit production ceased that resulted in federal criminal convictions. In 1989, the Rocky Flats contract operator sued the federal government, in part because, quote, "Compliance with the land disposal restrictions is currently impossible," unquote. Thirty years after Rocky Flats, proliferation of nuclear weapons is frightfully increasing. Despite the lack of nuclear repository facilities in the United States, the National Nuclear Safety Administration or Security Administration, NNSA, is forcing its plan to produce eighty weapons-grade plutonium-239 pits per year by 2030 at a cost of exceeding $1 trillion. And that's going to be at Los Alamos, New Mexico, and the Savannah River Site, South Carolina. The NNSA plan unfortunately is more nuclear superfund sites instead of infrastructure projects completed. Misguided temporary nuclear waste storage sites instead of affordable housing, and more citizens forced to live with radiation instead of affordable healthcare plans. Health and safety will be pre-terminated, as it has in the past, I know because I investigated it. With nuclear weapons and its veil of secrecy, as President Obama remarked in 2009, "The peace and security of a world without nuclear weapons," unquote, nuclear waste is not your friend.
Thank you. Imagine what we could do with a trillion dollars.
Be fun.
Right. Next, please.
Thank you, Council. My name is Donna Stein. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Hudson River Slough Clearwater and President of New York City Friends of Clearwater, both founded by Pete Seeger fifty years ago to clean up the environmental disaster that was the Hudson River. There was much success, but the river still needs our attention. Clearwater has long opposed and exposed the risks of nuclear power. Focus has been on the dangers of nuclear plants and the use of nuclear energy, but make no mistake, there is a direct connection between nuclear weapons and nuclear energy and its resultant nuclear waste. Nuclear is not just about the plant, the bomb. There are so many things up to that point. Uranium mining, milling, and weapons testing impacts communities around this country and the world, including First Nation communities with proposed waste storage on their lands. Pete Seeger, back in 1963, sang a song, "Never Again the A-Bomb." Look it up. He said, "We must forbid it. Take care that the third atom bomb never falls." Sadly, testing continues, even past the times we were told that it stopped, and nuclear weapons arsenals in several countries remain deeply troubling. History... History demonstrates that plans were made for, were mainly for the purpose to create material for nuclear bombs. There are much better, safer ways to boil water. Bob Alpern, an anti-nuclear activist and fellow Clearwater Board Director, often calls Indian Point "a pre-positioned nuclear weapon." So many things could go wrong. It sits too close to a high-pressure gas pipeline managed by a company who has pipeline accidents. It also sits on a seismic fault line, which was unknown to the builders when it was originally cited. Terrorists have included Indian Point as a possible target. Please put a halt to this madness, and don't make public employees have to be a party to this horror. I urge you to divest from nuclear weapons. Make history, attend to your legacy, and pass this resolution. It's a start. Thank you for your understanding of this important issue.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Bill Ofenlock, and I'm here to read a statement on behalf of Father Steve Kelly, whom you heard about earlier. He's been in prison now almost two years in Georgia for a plowshares action, and has served over 10 years in prison for similar actions. He writes, "I write regarding these resolutions worthy of your agenda and affecting New York City citizens and millions of other vulnerable people. I am currently a prisoner of conscience in Brunswick, Georgia, as a consequence of a witness, an embodiment of the vision of economic, political, and moral conversion given us in Isaiah, swords into plowshares. This nonviolent exposure of the omnicide of the trident offense system underlines your concerns of the danger of nuclear possession threat and, God forbid, use. But more importantly, and several Catholic workers and others will speak to this, it is trillions of dollars in theft from the needs of our society, as outlined by Eisenhower in his Presidential Departure Declaration. I am encouraged that you consider divestment and advocacy of the ICAN Treaty. Nuclear weapons will not go away by themselves."
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Yuni Chang, and I'm the field organizer with the War Resistors League, and we are the oldest secular anti-war organization in the US. I was born on August 13, 1996, in Seoul, South Korea, and I've lived on the East Coast for 22 years. This country has been at war for 80% of my life. The war my grandparents lived through and that my parents were born in, the one that killed 3 million Koreans, separated my family and remains one of the bloodiest wars in history, is still not over. This year is the 70th anniversary of that war. Nuclear weapons are tools of endless war. They were designed to wipe out human life and to destroy the world many times over. Therefore, War Resistors League supports these proposals, and we commend you for standing up to the grave threat of nuclear warfare. However, in our 96 years of organizing against war, we know that the only way to truly eliminate the threats posed by nuclear weapons is to end all wars. And the only way to end all wars is to address their root causes, which include racism, sexism, and all forms of exploitation. These root causes threaten humanity's common desire to live well and without fear, and we see them at play in the daily lives of all New Yorkers. We see the root causes of war thriving in a city that chooses to spend billions on building new jails and on cracking down on fare evasion instead of on NICA, harm reduction programs, and poverty benefits. The systems that wage war across the world, and the systems that police harass, surveil, and detain people in our city are the same. If you support divesting from nuclear weapons and reaffirming New York City as a nuclear-free zone for the well-being and future of humanity, then you cannot simultaneously fund and advocate for projects that criminalize people for being black, brown, queer, and trans, and poor. You have to fight for people's lives in every arena. As a city council, it is your responsibility to vote consistently for the safety and dignity of New Yorkers and those with whom we share this earth. We celebrate that a veto-proof majority supports this powerful and needed legislation, and we urge you to be brave and take a stand against violence in all its forms."
Thank you very much. Leslie.
Hi. First of all, thank you to the council members who, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with my voice today, but thank you to the council members who are taking your role on the city council seriously and giving us all the leadership on this issue. My name is Leslie Kagan. I'm a decades-long organizer in the peace and justice movements. And in fact, 38 years ago, I was the lead organizer of the historic nuclear disarmament protest on June 12, 1982, here in New York City. A few hours ago, I sat here, as I think many in the room, in disbelief, horrified, and outraged by the comments from the mayor's office. I urge you and your comrades on the city council to respond to those comments by quickly, very quickly, passing 976 and 1621. For decades, the people of this city have petitioned, lobbied, marched, rallied, and engaged in civil disobedience as part of the global movement to rid the world of the most horrific weapons ever produced, nuclear weapons. We should be proud of this history, but our work is far from over. Today, the world faces two great existential threats: the nightmare of a global climate crisis unfolding faster and more intensely than previously predicted, and the ever-present threat of use of nuclear weapons, either by accident or design. Nine nations have nuclear weapons, some of the biggest nations in the world. So one might ask, what is the point of New York City passing 976 and 1621? The point is this: Each of us, as citizens of the world, must find and use every single tool available to bring us, that is, the planet, back from the edge of disaster. There is no time to waste. Our opinions matter, but our opinions matter, but most critically, our actions are what is most important. The city of New York has the opportunity to help strengthen the global movement to rid the world of nuclear weapons. We urge you to use the power of your office to take the concrete steps by enacting 976 and 1621, and to do so without further delay. Quietly, the clock is ticking. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Very powerful. Thank you to this panel, and we're going to call up one more panel and see if we can then move over to the next room. But let me get this panel up here now.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak, council people. I'm very honored to be here, and I am going to speak very quickly and to, because I know we don't have much time. I come as a representative of a group called Women Strike for Peace. This was a group of women who, in the 1960s, the early 60s, fought on behalf of their children and the children of the United States because fallout from nuclear bomb testing in the Nevada desert had spread across the US. And scientists found the strontium-90 from this fallout in baby teeth, gathered from all over the United States. My mother was—
Did you say your name?
My name is Heidi Hutner.
Okay.
I'm a professor at Stony Brook University. I'm a writer, and I'm actually making a documentary film right now about women and nuclear disasters. So these women, one of, my mother was one of them, and this group was founded by Bella Abzug and Dagmar Wilson. These women, 50,000 of them, organized. It was the largest group at the time that had organized the United States, and they protested, and they convinced President Kennedy to sign the Limited Test Ban Treaty, and they stopped atmospheric bomb testing, or at least they greatly influenced this treaty. So I'm here on behalf of those women, and on behalf of the women indigenous people across the world, who actually are most harmed by nuclear disasters, by radiation waste. One of the facts in the preamble to this treaty that we spoke about today, that these wonderful people won a Nobel Peace Prize for, speaks to the gender issues. Women are twice as likely to get cancer from the same exposure to radiation as adult men, and they are nearly twice as likely to die from that exposure. Children many, many times more so, and little girls most of all are harmed seven times more so than adult white males. But radiation standards, safety standards, are based on an adult male body. So this is an important fact. Indigenous people, we know, are most exposed because they are in communities where uranium mining takes place, and we also know that their communities have been very much affected by nuclear bombs. These facts are often ignored, and these communities and these people are most harmed. So I speak on behalf of them and on behalf of the children, and I ask that you humbly pass this resolution and work hard, and I thank you so much for your work.
Thank, thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Lily Adams. I work with the Union of Concerned Scientists, or UCS, a nonprofit organization dedicated to using rigorous, independent science to solve our planet's most pressing problems, including the threat of nuclear weapons. I would like to thank the New York City Council members today for considering this urgent and important issue. As an organization of scientists, UCS must reckon with the fact that scientists help bring about the development of nuclear weapons. Yet after the creation of the bomb and its tragic use in New Mexico and Japan, the very same scientists were some of the most ardent advocates for disarmament and the prevention of their use ever again. UCS works to continue that legacy of science advocacy. As others have said last week, the Bulletin of the Atomic Scientists set their doomsday clock to just 100 seconds to midnight, citing unprecedented nuclear threats and calling on the world to take immediate action. Despite these dire warnings, our federal government is neglecting its responsibility to act, and in some cases, is actively making the world less safe by promoting dangerous nuclear weapons policies. This is why UCS believes it is crucial for local governments to take a stand. We urgently need local elected officials and concerned advocates to raise their voices and denounce these terrible, inhumane weapons. This action is especially powerful coming from New York City, the birthplace of the Manhattan Project and home to many former nuclear weapon sites. New York City has a stake in this fight, and as a New York City resident myself, I am proud to be here today as part of this historic effort and to support the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. The Union of Concerned Scientists wholeheartedly supports New York City in divesting from the companies involved in the production and maintenance of nuclear weapons, and we urge New York City Council to support Resolution 976 and Introduction 1621 to help create a safer world. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Timon Wallace. I'm representing Nuclear Ban US and the Acronym Institute for Disarmament Diplomacy. And I've given you two background documents. One is called Warheads to Windmills, which is a report about the links between climate change and nuclear weapons, and demonstrates not only the links between these two, but the fact that we can't address climate change without addressing nuclear weapons. And we need the money, we need the scientists and the engineers, and we need the international goodwill that is being squandered by these weapons. So, New York is already in the lead on fossil fuels, and so that's why I hope we can add that to the, to the nuclear issue. The other document that I've given you is just a very brief summary of research I did back in the 1990s about the peace movement in the 80s that led to the INF Treaty and to the largest disarmament process that we've seen so far, including, as we, many people here were part of, the Nuclear Freeze Movement, the million people marching in the streets of New York and so on. And my research was looking at what ultimately affected the Reagan administration to reverse course from calling the Soviets, you know, the evil empire, into being willing to sign the most comprehensive treaty that was ever signed up to that point. And it was about pressure on these companies. It was about divestment campaigns and boycotts. It was about cities like Chicago and Oakland, California, refusing to have contracts with these companies, as well as divesting. And so I think we need to remember this legacy when you're looking at divestment and how important it is. It was, it was important in many other issues, as well as in the nuclear issue back in the 1980s. So, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, please.
My name is Vicki Elson, Executive Director of the Treaty Awareness Campaign. Like many of the people in this room, part of our work as members of ICAN, the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons, is to visit the UN missions here in New York City. So I want to tell you a little story. One day, as we were visiting the UN mission of Antigua-Barbuda, we were talking about the 122 countries that adopted the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. We were talking about the countries that have already signed and ratified it. We were talking about ICAN's Nobel Peace Prize. We were asking how we can support Antigua-Barbuda to get going and sign this treaty sooner rather than later. And they were saying, yes, we're going to sign the treaty, but it's going to take a while, lots of red tape. And then we started telling them about what's happening here in the US, what the people in this room are doing all over the country, working with faith organizations, schools, universities, banks, hospitals, cities, counties, states, and the US Congress to bring an end to the 75-year nightmare of nuclear weapons. So I was talking about what we're doing here in this country, and I watched this person's face change. And she said, you know what? I'm going to light some fires under some people today, and I'm happy to report that Antigua-Barbuda has since signed and ratified the treaty. I don't take personal credit for it. What we do here in the US and what happens in New York City has an impact. It tells the rest of the world that there are strong currents here in solidarity on this issue. We look forward to the day, sooner or later, when US policy will change to reflect the fact that nuclear weapons of mass extinction are obsolete and indescribably dangerous, sucking trillions of dollars and our best scientists away from the green technologies we need to survive the climate emergency. Here in the Big Apple, you have an opportunity to accelerate the transformation of warheads to windmills. You've already voted to divest from fossil fuels, a magnificent step toward being on the right side of history, survival, and sanity. Thank you so much for your beautiful efforts to do the same with nuclear weapons. I have to tell you, this work is tiring. Anybody know what I mean? Like, it's hard. It's like pushing a big radioactive rock up a hill or something, you know? And today, I feel so encouraged, the stuff with the mayor's office notwithstanding, I feel so delighted and refreshed to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
My name is Alfred Meyer, and I'm a board member of Physicians for Social Responsibility, an organization which has worked on nuclear issues since 1963 and the issue of atmospheric nuclear testing. It's a great pleasure to be here, and I appreciate this opportunity. Dear counsel and committee members, nuclear weapons threaten, in an instant, to vaporize all that we love in New York City. We must act to end this grave danger to our survival. Resolution 976 and Introduction 1621 are two important steps that New York City can take to protect and promote public health and safety. Thank you for moving these two items, which show strong support for city council action on such an important topic. Cities are the targets of nuclear weapons, and cities are the first responders to an attack. From a medical perspective, there is no response possible, given that the medical providers, medical facilities, and medical supplies are destroyed by a nuclear blast. Prevention is the only medical response to this threat. Resolution 976 and Introduction 1621 are two good methods of prevention, which will benefit New York City residents. New York City can play an important part in the growing cities, states, national, and international movement to get countries to sign and ratify the 2017 United Nations Treaty for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. Divestment of New York City investments from nuclear weapons-related corporations and banks is a strong statement of the seriousness of this topic, and a moral statement that we don't want our pensioners' benefits to come from nuclear weapons, which could destroy us. When a nation possesses nuclear weapons, it harms its own population at many steps of the nuclear fuel and weapons chain, a complex and very large industry. As noted in the Treaty for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, women and children are most impacted by exposure to radiation. So this matter is urgent for us to address, although it will take time to make the changes needed to achieve a nuclear weapons-free world. needed to achieve a nuclear weapons-free world. The wise leadership and support for resolution 976 and introduction 1621 to date is most appreciated. I trust that ongoing and attentive engagement by the city council will support achievement of these important missions, which in turn benefit us all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Chuck Johnson, Charles K. Johnson, Program Director of International Physicians for the Prevention of Nuclear War. Thank you, co-chairs and council members, for having us. I'm honored to have the opportunity to speak to you today and wish to thank the New York City Council for having the foresight to consider these two measures, which, taken together, would be the strongest statement yet by a US municipality in favor of global sanity in the face of the continued and renewed threat to global survival posed by nuclear weapons and war. It's apropos that the International City of New York would lead the way toward reconsidering our nation's reliance on the judgment and actions of a few flawed and fragile individuals to prevent a nuclear catastrophe, or, as our president put it, "fire and fury like the world has never seen." International Physicians for the Prevention of Nuclear War is a federation consisting of 63 national affiliates worldwide that have studied the effects of a single atomic bomb and of nuclear war at various levels of severity. In all cases, we find there is no adequate medical response to the use of nuclear weapons, which destroys medical and other infrastructure, as Alfred just said, and wounds and kills the professionals who would ordinarily provide aid to the sick and wounded. Consequently, we concluded, as our founding organization, Physicians for Social Responsibility, in the US originally said, that prevention is the only cure and the only responsible medical position to take on the subject. You've received in your packets three statements from physicians representing IPPNW, our co-president Tillman Ruff on the faculty of the University of Melbourne on Australia, and a co-founder of ICANN, co-president Ira Helfand, practicing physician in Northampton, Mass, and IPPNW Germany representative Inga Blum, a physician in Hamburg, Germany. In addition, I'm attaching to the end of my testimony the statement of IPPNW, the World Medical Association, the International Council of Nurses, and the World Federation of Public Health Associations in strong support of the 2017 UN Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. Working together with the International Committee for the Red Cross, we are actively encouraging all levels of government to support the Nuclear Ban Treaty in any way they can, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for coming in and giving testimony. We appreciate that. And what we think we're going to do now is move—next door, you ready for us there? Okay, so for those of you who want to come in, come in, please, and we'll continue the hearing in that room.